City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:00 PM on October the 5th. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll, including council members and city staff.
Mayor Protem Girba.
Here.
Councilmember CEO.
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Del Orco.
Here.
Councilmember Camaro Sulak. Mayor Marl.
Present.
Interim City Manager Green.
Here.
City Engineer Fordice.
Here.
And Police Chief Hart is not attending tonight.
Very good. Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to -- a quorum is present, by the way. And at this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
It is submitted.
Moved by CEO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have, and the motion carries unanimously. We'll hold off on excusing the absence of Councilmember Camaro Sulak in the hopes that he's able to attend this evening. So we'll transition now to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. And again, following normal protocol, we'll begin with those who are present in the audience this evening. If you'd like to speak to the Huntington Woods connecting sidewalk, when we exhaust comments and questions from audience members, we'll transition to those who are participating remotely, or who provided comments in advance of tonight's meeting to the city clerk. So is there anyone from the audience who would like to speak this evening? Please, come forward to the podium. You have three minutes.
There are so many serious issues with this sidewalk that it's impossible to fit in the three minutes. Therefore, here is the condensed form of the top 10 issues of the sidewalk. Councilmembers and others involved in this project have received emails of these issues in full form. Issue number one: Lack of notification and communication. It has been a reoccurring theme with the city to not properly notify residents of things that can profoundly impact them. I and my neighbor, who are the only two township property owners where sidewalk is intended, have been no exception to this. Issue number two: Maintenance. My family's property is nearly 2 and 1/2 acres and more than 400 feet long across Macon. A NFL football field is 300 feet long. Who will take care of all maintenance responsibilities? Issue number three: Liabilities. Who will take on all liabilities? Issue number four: Our huge landmark trees. These trees have been here long before Michigan was a state. Who will pay for their removal and replacement value if they die? Issue number five: The loss of our natural evergreen fence going along Macon, which protects our privately owned forest, will cause even more trespassing problems than we've already experienced. Issue number six: Compensation. Will there be any for affected Celine Township property owners? Issue number seven: Where will people cross the street? There is only one crosswalk located at Michigan Avenue on Monroe Street. An additional crosswalk with pedestrian lights will be needed. Issue number eight: Safety. The current sidewalk plans cause more serious safety concerns than fixes them. I have three children, and this sidewalk under its current plans scares me. Issue number nine: This is not a connecting sidewalk. It is only a partial sidewalk that ends at the Celine River Bridge. Issue number 10, and last but not least, the contaminated Adient property. Is the city really willing to move heaven and contaminated earth to make this sidewalk happen? In conclusion, it is reckless and irresponsible to continue proceeding with these current sidewalk plans. It would be a waste of city taxpayers' money to install half of a sidewalk that leads to nowhere. There are many other safer, better, and more cost-effective sidewalk alternatives with much fewer issues, such as placing the sidewalk across the street, or keeping the sidewalk within just the city limits, or at the back of Huntington Woods and connect sidewalk to the city's west side, which could help build business and development to this part of the city where it is lacking. The last time I inquired, I was told that this project, which again is only half a sidewalk, will cost more than $200,000 after it's done, with developer David Shipman paying around $120,000 and the city paying the rest. How is it that the city could make it a requirement to Shipman to install this sidewalk when there is no guarantee that it can even be executed? And how is it that these sidewalk plans were allowed to continue when years ago the Huntington Woods HOA refused to sign a maintenance and liabilities contract? I am asking all of council and city officials and everyone involved to please choose wisely, choose lawfully, and choose ethically.
Thank you. Are there additional comments from the audience this evening pertaining to the Huntington Woods connecting sidewalk? No? Very good. Thank you. Clerk Royal, were there any emails or comments typed in under the chat icon at the bottom of the screen this evening?
Yes, I have several.
Please.
The first one is from an eight-year-old Celine Township resident, and they say, "Why do we have to have a giant sidewalk going across our whole property? Can it be put somewhere else? I don't live in the city. We shouldn't have a city sidewalk when we don't live in the city. I don't want to shovel it, and I don't want to, you know, rest really close to the side of the sidewalk all the way down and then take away what you cut, because this sidewalk would be super long and huge, and that would be a ton of work. I already have my own sidewalk around my house to take care of, and it is enough. I also don't want my humongous tree to die. They have been here for many years, and they make the air healthy. Also, why do you want to put a sidewalk across that bad property that has lots of chemicals in it? Will people need to wear a mask when they go on the sidewalk? My mom always says to treat others the way you want to be treated. My school Pleasant Ridge says to be kind. If this was happening to you, wouldn't you want people to treat you the same way that you would be treated?" Then we have a 13-year-old resident from Celine Township. "It's wrong to force something on someone. Forcing someone to maintain a sidewalk that's more than 400 feet long by 6 feet wide is crazy. The width alone of this sidewalk would be taller than my own height. Imagine taking care of that every day. It would cause serious bag problems. Also, there are trees that are hundreds of years old that will possibly die because of this sidewalk. I love my big, beautiful trees that provide shade, and I can't picture my yard without them. Imagine being forced to have a ginormous structure across your entire property and being forced to take care of it. How much money will it cost to maintain it, and how many hours of work would it be? Please put yourself in our shoes, and please realize how wrong and unfair this is." And then from the 16-year-old Celine Township resident. "If the sidewalk is installed as currently planned, it would be devastating to my family in many ways, and harmful for city residents as well concerning safety, especially if a sidewalk is going to be placed across the contaminated property. There are a number of safety problems with the layout of the land on our side of the road, and this sidewalk will not fix them, and will only make things worse. Additionally, the sidewalk will undoubtedly result in the damage of our huge oak tree, disturbing their roots and cause for their removal. Rather, install the sidewalk on the other side and add a crosswalk to prevent the destruction of trees, and it would be much safer there concerning the scope of the land. This sidewalk is supposed to be for a neighborhood for their convenience. Shouldn't they be the ones responsible for it? This would include shoveling, edging, damage repair, cost of our trees if they die, and the liability that would occur should someone injure themselves on the sidewalk. Whether it is installed on either side, these responsibilities and liabilities should not be placed upon the township residents by the demands of others. It is completely unfair, and it is all of this even 100% legal. I hope that my family will be protected, and that all of this will be resolved in the best and safest way possible for everyone." Then we have an email from Brian Falch, and he states...
Hold on one second, Clerk Royal. I apologize. We're getting some feedback in the room. I would ask, make sure you have your -- for those of you who aren't at the dais, make sure you have your cellphone or electronic device as far away from the microphone as possible. My apologies. Please continue, Clerk Royal.
This is from Brian Falch. "I have never been contacted directly by any person or entity that wants the sidewalk project to go forward across my property. I did attend one meeting at City Hall that I was made privy to by another affected property owner. I did make my concerns known at that meeting and looked at what was presented to me as the current design proposal for the sidewalk. I understand that there are many different stakeholders associated with this project, and that there are varied concerns and desires associated with it. I do not in any way diminish or disregard any of those concerns. My questions have always been that if the sidewalk goes in, who is responsible for the hard maintenance if there is a problem, examples of which may be seasonal heaving, which may present a hazard, or any unforeseen events that would cause the area that crosses Riverside Lane to be an encumbrance to safe usage by all those property owners that have a deeded easement to use the road. President dictates that any entity that places an improvement on my property for the public good takes responsibility for any repairs and provides contact information. The Washtenaw County Road Commission does not want the immediate property owner doing repair work to the roadway in front of their house. DTE accepts ownerships and responsibility for the electrical and gas lines. Comcast, AT&amp;T, and any other communication companies would not want homeowners doing, excuse me, repair work on improvements that they've made or placed on the property. All of these entities that have placed improvements on my property for the public good accept responsibility for what they have done, and provide contact information on how to get in touch with them in case there is a problem." So far to date, no one has stepped up to accept long-term responsibility for any sidewalk that would be placed across my property. In fact, it has been just the opposite. Any entities that have been working to accomplish getting this improvement done across my property have expressly said that they have no ownership and no responsibility for it. So my question is, what entity accepts responsibility for this proposed improvement across my property, and what is their contact information to get in touch with them if there's a problem? At this point, my wife and I do not feel like there is -- will be significant impact on our property whether or not the sidewalk goes in. That is, of course, if they stick with the last design that was presented, which shows the sidewalk hugging quite tightly to Macon Road with minimal disruption to the landscape bed at the end of Riverside Lane, and no removal of mature trees on my property. But my questions are still very much in the forefront. Who accepts responsibility for this improvement, and any required maintenance going forward in the long term, and how do I get in touch with that entity? Oh, just one second. I've got people waiting to get in. Then I've got an email from Lance Hollin, 14 Riverside, Celine Township. "I have spoken to my other two neighbors at 12 and 16 Riverside Lane, and we agree with Mr. Falch's understanding of this matter. We add a request to formally be updated on the city's process as this moves forward. We have requested this of the county and township. Finally, I'm sure we all share concerns for the 200-plus-year-old oak tree that the sidewalk must go around. Who is consulted concerning this tree?" And then finally, from Jeff Weiss. "My name is Jeff Weiss, and I'm a resident from Huntington Woods Phase 1. I would like to take a moment to remind the mayor and entire city council that Ms. Ziegren is not a resident of the city of Celine, and therefore, the city of Celine owes her nothing in terms of explanation and/or direction. Should she want to have a say in the city, she can ask to have her home annexed and pay the same taxes that all of us pay. She is not, I repeat, not a stakeholder of this sidewalk, and that has been approved by Washtenaw County Road Commission. Had the appropriate people ignored her empty and belled threats last September, the sidewalk would have been built, and this would have been a done deal. She need not be given the time of day. Again, she is not a resident of the city of Celine, and therefore, does not deserve your time and attention. Thank you for your hard work, and have a good evening."
Thank you for that, Clerk Royal. Any additional comments? We'll provide those who are participating electronically one last opportunity to type in any questions or concerns at the chat on the -- within the chat icon, excuse me, which may be found at the bottom of your screen. One last opportunity to provide remarks, share concerns, or ask questions pertaining to the Huntington Woods connecting sidewalk. Clerk Royal, have we received anything else?
I did get some questions from Jen Harmout, but I don't know if it's for the session or if it's just questions in general. I'm dying.
If Jen Harmout is still participating, if she would indicate in the next few seconds whether those questions were for the work meeting pertaining to the Huntington Woods connecting sidewalk, or whether they pertain to another matter or matters that are on the regular meeting agenda?
Okay, so she did respond that yes, it's for this. So she -- questions are, what is driving the cost and requirement of the easement? Would it matter if it was a boardwalk type of solution rather than cement? Would that change the requirement or cost estimate? Was there more than one estimate from Fonsen Company, and did they offer any ideas to help reduce the estimated cost? Thank you for your consideration.
Very good. Thank you for those comments. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Clerk Royal, were there any other comments, questions submitted this evening for public comment?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannon, I just want you to be aware that it does not appear that we are broadcasting on Facebook right now, so I'm not sure that people know that there's another opportunity to ask questions at this point. Do we look to Facebook, or are we only taking questions from the Zoom?
I don't believe we monitor Facebook during the meetings. We are supposed to be live streaming on Facebook, so I'm motioning to the RIT Director now to make sure that that's done. But we generally just review Zoom and accept in-person comments from those who choose to attend our meetings.
Okay, just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Yep. Clerk Royal, one last time. Any additional questions or comments this evening?
Jen did add that boardwalk does not disrupt the contaminated property. I would like to see a safe pathway connecting Celine residents to Celine without killing trees or disrupting contaminated soil.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate everybody who made comment this evening or asked questions. We will try our best to address those during the course of our discussion. I will remind those who are in the audience and who are participating remotely that at this juncture, while the sidewalk is a stipulation in the site plan for Huntington Woods Phase 2, it is not currently a project that falls under the umbrella, if you will, of city government. We do not have responsibility or oversight to construct said sidewalk, but as I articulated at a previous meeting, it is something that I am advocating for. And the consensus that I would like to see this evening or at a future meeting would be for our attorneys to negotiate with Mr. Shipman a release agreement whereby he relinquishes the control of the connecting sidewalk, and we proceed expeditiously with constructing a connecting pathway during the construction season of 2021. Not sure if we'll get there this evening, but we'll begin our discussion. I will note, for the public's benefit, as well as my council colleagues, you should have received an email from me earlier today. It was actually a forwarded email from Mark McCullough at the Road Commission. He had a family emergency and was unsure if he would be able to attend this evening. If he is able to attend, he'll log on, but he thought that would be closer to 7:00. We do have Joe Maynard from Washtenaw Engineering, who was hired by Mr. Shipman to design, I think, what ultimately became three iterations of a connecting sidewalk. Mr. Maynard, are you with us this evening?
Brian, Mark McCullough is here.
Oh, Mark, good. Glad that you're with us. I hope everything is well, Mark.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, appreciate that. Let's begin. Joe, are you -- Mr. Maynard, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here with you tonight as well.
Very good. Well, we appreciate your time. Joe, do you want to take a few minutes for council's benefit and for the public's edification to talk a little bit about the process, the multiple design iterations, and where you're at currently with Mr. Shipman as it relates to design, bidding, and possible awarding of a contract for a firm to construct the sidewalk?
Sure. This project has, as you know, gone on for about two, two and a half years now. It started off as a sidewalk design through different iterations over the last few years. It's changed in location, as has been noted by some residents, that the sidewalk location did change in order to preserve some very large trees. It's brought the sidewalk closer to the road, edge of the roadway, added curbing, and other modifications for drainage, and basically protection of the creek, and discharging stormwater from areas that -- just based on working with the Road Commission, better ways of getting connected to the existing creek that's there. And basically, you know, every step, as we change things, costs go up, or different things, you know, preserving trees, bringing that sidewalk closer to the road, added curb and gutter, and additional stormwater, piping systems. So we've gone through several iterations. The plans are all approved at this point in time by the Road Commission. We have seeked pricing from several different contractors. The city has that information on the contractors and the pricing, and we were ready to go forward until we realized the pricing was kind of higher than expected, and there's other issues that you've noted here tonight that need to be worked out as well.
Very good, Joe. Well, why don't you hang tight? Appreciate your time and analysis this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Mark very briefly. I'm not sure he has much to add. Mark, any comments that you would like to share this evening? And I don't know if you were present during the public comment portion of tonight's meeting, but there was a comment made about possibly constructing a pathway as a boardwalk as opposed to using asphalt or concrete. Is that something that you could speak to? Is that a possibility? And how would you and your colleagues at the Road Commission feel about that being done in the right-of-way of Macon Road?
Yeah, Brian. I don't have a lot to add. I chimed in. I logged in halfway. I'm guessing halfway through public comment. I did hear about the boardwalk suggestion. You know, the Road Commission is not the engineer on this project. Anything is possible. It can be reviewed. It's one of those things, I'll know it when I see it. I'd have to take it as it comes in, if that's a suggestion that wants to be pursued. But I don't have any suggestion or insight as an engineer to offer as whether it's feasible or not.
Thank you, Mark. Joe, before we open it up for questions, is there any comments that you would like to add pertaining to a boardwalk pathway as opposed to one made of asphalt or concrete?
So one of the things I see with boardwalk pathways is normally they're not up against the road right of way, right along the curb line. They're usually set back further. If we were to do a boardwalk path, we would have to pull that boardwalk away from the edge of the roadway, you know, in order to make it at least what I would feel is a safer pathway. I think I said ask Mark to indicate one way or another if he agrees with that or not, but I don't think we could do a boardwalk pathway right against the edge of the roadway.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. I'm going to open it up for questions in just a moment. I would note, for the public's benefit, because this was referenced, I think, in numerous comments this evening, that we're discussing a connecting sidewalk that basically runs from Huntington Woods to the city limits. There is still a gap at the old Universal Diecast Hoover Ball Bearing Site, which is now owned by Adient. I will note that a representative from Adient is on the top of our regular meeting agenda to provide an update on environmental remediation, but at the conclusion of that individual's remarks, I will also be asking and advocating for the construction of a sidewalk on that property as well. So I just want to note that for the public's benefit. Here's the order for questions this evening. I'm going to begin with those who are present in council chambers. So the order will be CEO, Del Orco, and then I will transition to Mayor Protem Girba, then Councilwoman Dillon, Mitchell, and end with Councilmember Camaro Sulak, if he's present this evening. So please introduce yourself. Gentlemen, Mark and Joe especially, having a little bit of a -- I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you, especially Joe, so if you could please speak up and speak clearly and succinctly when you're called upon or asked a question, that would be great. Mr. CEO, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I recently looked at some pages of cost estimates, and as I think Joe correctly stated, I was somewhat shocked by how much the prices keep increasing for this project. So if we go at this project now, it looks like the price is somewhere in the range of $200,000. Is that correct, Your Honor?
I believe Joe can speak to that, but that is my understanding, is that the most recent bids were coming in in the low to mid $200,000s. Is that correct, Joe?
Yes, that is correct.
So if it is that high now, what portion is ours, what portion is Mr. Shipman's?
So that's an excellent question. That would be one of the things that our attorneys would need to negotiate with his representatives. Mr. McCullough can correct me, but, Mark, I believe that Mr. Shipman currently has with the Road Commission or other entities somewhere in the neighborhood of, is it $106,000, $107,000?
Yeah, from memory here, I can -- let me see if I can log in here. That sounds about right, Brian.
So suffice it to say, Mr. CEO, to answer your question, Mr. Shipman has provided thus far a figure in the low $100,000s.
Okay. Keep in mind, that is a surety. That is not a down payment to apply towards construction. So when -- you know, if the city were to do this project, all the Road Commission would need is what we call a letter of retainage from the city of Celine. Basically, you're acting upon your good faith of credit, because you're a city entity, that you'll just retain, paying the contractor 10% of the project cost until the project is signed off by the Road Commission, meaning the permit's closed out. But being that Mr. Shipman is a private entity, he doesn't have that luxury, nor does anyone else. So hence why he put that collateral down, if that's what you want to call it, surety, that if and when something goes awry, there's money in the coffers to address it, but that's separate from paying the contractor, if that makes any sense.
Okay, thank you. The other question I have is just offhand. In your estimate, from what you know of these projects, either Mark or Joe, would a boardwalk be more or less expensive than concrete?
Probably a question for Joe.
Well, typically, I've seen boardwalks cost more than concrete sidewalks. It typically goes as asphalt is the least expensive than concrete than boardwalks. Boardwalks are more expensive because they do require foundations and everything else that goes with them, and the cost of lumber right now, as you may or may not know, is extremely high right now. So the cost would be even exacerbated based on that current shortage of wood materials.
Thank you, Joan. And then also, the life expectancy of concrete as opposed to a boardwalk?
I don't know quite the life expectancy of a boardwalk. Typically, all sidewalks are usually designed around a 20-year life, but all of them have maintenance requirements that are necessary from basically year to year, you need to do inspections and verify if these working concrete cracks. So depending on the year and the frost and so forth, you know, every project has maintenance that's associated with it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. CEO. Councilmember Del Orco, questions for either of our guests?
Thank you, Mayor Marl. Just for a point of clarification, since I'm relatively new on council and haven't been part of these negotiations, the current drawing and the current plan, as I see it, only brings the sidewalk up to the south side of the bridge on Macon Road. So this does not provide for the sidewalk that goes across the Adient property, and that's being considered at a later time. Is that correct?
I can answer that, and that's an excellent question, Mr. Del Orco. So let's go back about 12 to 14 months when Mr. Mike Stolten was our contact at Adient. At his most recent presentation to city council, we messaged and discussed at length Adient constructing either a permanent or temporary sidewalk on their property, and potentially doing it in conjunction with Mr. Shipman or any entity in the future that is constructing the Huntington Woods sidewalk, and doing that jointly, and thus leveraging the economies of scale and reducing the cost for both entities or individuals. Obviously, you're aware that Mr. Stolten has left Adient and is no longer with that organization, so a sidewalk on the former Universal Diecast Hoover Ball Bearing Site has essentially been put on hold, at least for the past 12 months. So as I indicated earlier, that's one of the things I want to message on later this evening at 7:00 with our new representative from Adient, which is, I believe they need to move expeditiously to construct some sort of pathway, be it permanent or temporary, on that site.
Okay. And I would assume that some of that hinges upon the findings with the environmental survey results?
To a certain extent, yes.
Okay. Secondly, this question could potentially be for Mark, Joe, or maybe even Mr. Fordice. As I'm reviewing the Fonsen bid, towards the bottom of the page on that document, there's a fair number of items that were excluded from the price of the estimate of cost. And I'm just concerned as to how much of -- what percentage of the cost that those exclusions may represent in the grand total of what the sidewalk would cost, if anyone can comment on that.
Joe, when you pull up that document, would you be prepared to comment or respond to Mr. Del Orco's question?
Yes, I was trying to pull that up right now.
Yep, take your time.
So, and actually...
I beg your pardon, Mayor?
Yes.
Can you please clarify...
Can you please clarify which document we're looking at? Thank you.
Mr. Delarco?
It was a document that was sent as an attachment in Terry's first email about this work meeting. I believe it was the second document attached, and it's the bid proposal from a company called Fonson.
Mr. Maynard, whenever you're ready to respond, sir.
Okay, so I found that document, the exclusions were permits or inspection fees. I'm assuming that comes from the Road Commission. And those fees, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. McCullough can correct me, but I think they've already been paid. Staking or engineering, that work when it was originally assigned with Huntington Woods was contracted through our office. I don't have the exact figures of that cost at this time, but I could work to get you that later on. Clearing and removing of debris, hauling of contaminated soils. Looks like the next one is kind of duplicate again, excludes permits, bonds, inspection fees layout. That's kind of the same thing as covered above. Testing services, we will have concrete testing of the concrete material as it's placed. So these items are excluded from his bid, which is typical for a contractor to do.
Okay.
But I couldn't give you an estimate, you know, for construction staking, engineering and so forth. Typically, we're probably around 12% of the construction cost.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. My last question centers on some of Ms. Segreant's concerns. I think she has every right to be here today and voice her and express her concerns with the sidewalk. I don't agree with anyone that states that she has no skin in the game or no stake in the matter, that the sidewalk will run right across her property. And it is for that reason that I would like some additional assurances and clarification on whether or not there will be an indemnification clause to exclude her from any maintenance responsibilities from the sidewalk, as I seem to hear differing opinions and points of view on where we are with this issue. And maybe it's because it's not currently under the jurisdiction of the city's control that we aren't able to offer these assurances. But if anyone present in the meeting today can comment on where we are with those, I would greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Weiss, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium. Yes, I would love for you to comment and for the public...
For the public record, Mr. Weiss, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, is one of three members of the Huntington Woods Phase 1 HOA Board. Is that correct, Jeff?
Correct.
Very good. The floor is yours.
So we can address those three things, which have been bounced around for quite a while. And I will say, one, we have already agreed Huntington Woods Phase 1 to take on the liability for the sidewalk, and this has been communicated. I know not everybody has been at all of these meetings. So we have already secured an estimate, and we have already agreed that we would take on the liability for the sidewalk. We are working with the Association for Pulte, Phase 2, to coordinate that all three phases, should there be any damage or maintenance work for the sidewalk, that all three phases would be assessed an equal amount for whatever that cost would be. So if there was some heaving and a cost, I'm making it up, $1,000, we would take on that cost divided by the number of homes in Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. Pulte has already agreed to that, and we are working with them on securing that. The third issue was maintenance for the winter months. All over the county, there are sidewalks like this that simply have a sign posted on them around October and removed in April or so that simply said, "Winter maintenance will not be done on these sidewalks. You assume your own risk during those times of year." That covers the three main concerns that have been raised, focused on those, on the property in front. So we have assured it. We were asked to put something in writing, but I am not prepared to have our association go through legal fees for a sidewalk that I am still not convinced is ever going to materialize. I assure everybody that when that does happen, we will move forward and make those three assurances. We already have the insurance company lined up. We have Pulte lined up, and we'll have those signs made up that will be put up there and cover that property for six months. So three of those major things should be and will be covered. We never said we would do nothing. I can't speak for five years ago. We have always said that we would work on this and assure that those things would be addressed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
That's all. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Delarco. Mayor Potem Girba, are you still with us? I think you might be muted, Dean.
Yeah, I just had him unmute.
Very good. The floor is yours if you have questions for either of our guests or member of city staff, myself, or even a representative from Huntington Woods.
Yeah, first question is regarding the maintenance in long term. As you'd mentioned, when we look at this, there is no eminent domain involved in this. That would be an issue that probably could arise as part of the boardwalk if we had to acquire more land. And at that point, I would not be in favor of anything moving this forward. Eminent domain is not currently any consideration at this point. It's all in the right of way of the county, correct?
I think that's for, is that for Mark from the Road Commission?
Yeah, I would say.
I rely on Joe. He's the engineer of record. My permit only goes, that's been issued, is for road and work in the right of way, so...
And that is correct. All the work proposed on the plan is within the right of way.
And when we look at other projects similar to what, like the Pittsfield Trail, which runs along textile and Lor Road, how was that handled in terms of maintenance? And I understand Mr. Weiss just mentioned how it was, but there has to be some other type of liability that either the township or the county is taking on during those months, is it? Is it not a possibility that they have some kind of coverage?
So the pathway that you referred to on textile township, Pittsfield Township on Textile Road was a federal grant that Pittsfield Township secured, and they built it under permit. The Washington County Road Commission has no liability, no responsibility, no indemnity, nothing concerning sidewalks. We are strictly a road agency. So Pittsfield Township, under those circumstances, under permit, takes on all liability matters for if and when something were to go awry for that pathway.
So there's currently no other situations where we have walking trails or so forth that are in the right of way of the road in terms of anywhere within the county?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
You know, when we talk about trails and other walkways and non-motorized paths, are there any within the county that are within the right of ways of the Road Commission?
Sure, yes.
So who takes care of those?
I don't know. Not the Road Commission.
Okay. So it would be a responsibility somewhere in the county or the parks or whatever. Or whatever, I can't...
Keep in mind, the Washington County Road Commission is an autonomous agency from Washington County at large. So I can't speak on behalf of what the county at large would weigh in on that answer.
Okay. That just, we may have to do a little more outreach in terms of the county and understanding that. The other question, and council should remember that when we built the, when we approved the plans for the Layer Farm, I argued for concrete for that pathway, and it was asphalt instead. So if that would reduce the cost, I'm not sure why we would not use asphalt in this similar situation if we needed to adjust the pricing to bring it down. It should be no different than a similar type of approach because it runs along a road and is exactly the same type of situation. The other one, I'm still not clear on the surety statement. Are we saying that he only has a surety in place for a certain dollar amount, and yet we have no actual cash on hand? Or could you clarify that?
Mark, you want to take that? I don't know if you heard Mayor Potem Girba's question. I might be able to elaborate a bit as well. You might be muted, Mark.
He is.
Mark, you're muted. Did we lose him, Chris? Did he freeze? No?
We can move on for other questions. That's just an answer. We can have a follow-up on that. I want to understand that better. My understanding, there was actual funds deposited with the county, not that it was a surety bond type situation.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, Mr. Girba, I don't have that paperwork in front of me. I think it's at least $65,000 unrelated to a surety.
Okay. Thank you. For now, that's my questions.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Dylan, the floor is yours. I would note, I don't know if Mr. McCullough walked away or his screen froze, but please ask your questions, and if they're for Mark, we'll try our best to address those, or they'll be addressed when he returns to the meeting.
I appreciate that. Mr. Girba just hit upon two of mine. The last one was the surety. I'd like clarification on that at some point. The other question that he had talked about, which I wanted to mention, was the asphalt. We did approve that for Layer Farm, so if that is an option, that's something I would like to look into.
Real quick, Councilwoman Dylan, Joe or Mark, could you address the question of asphalt versus concrete?
Brian, I got a water crisis in the House right now. I gotta bail.
Our apologies, Mark. We'll talk to you soon, my friend. Thanks for being with us. Mr. Maynard, I don't know if you heard my question. It's been raised by at least two of my colleagues, Mayor Potem Girba and Councilwoman Dylan. Are you able to address the question pertaining to concrete versus asphalt?
That is certainly something we can take a look at. We've done asphalt pathways. They've been done in the road right of way previously. I would need to get with the Road Commission to ensure in this situation it would be adequate. I see no reason that we couldn't do it. And asphalt sidewalks do tend to have a same similar lifespan as concrete and do come in at a lower cost.
So I'm going to move on with my questions. This one actually will probably be for either the mayor or Mr. Green, which is, has the city's legal counsel provided an opinion as to the city taking on a project that is not within the city limits?
I'm not aware that they've provided a formal written opinion, but this is a matter that I've discussed on numerous occasions with several attorneys within the city attorney's office.
Okay. And their answer was what?
Well, some of those conversations date back to the previous city manager. I think maybe one or two included intra-manager Green. I don't recall any hostility or angst expressed to me, either verbally or in writing, pertaining to the city acquiring oversight and responsibility for constructing this sidewalk.
Okay. If you have documentation from them, can you forward that to council? Because I don't have a recollection of ever seeing it, and it is something that I would want to pursue. And then so, my next question is going to be, has the city considered a special assessment for this sidewalk, since Huntington Woods residents would be the primary beneficiary of that sidewalk?
That is not something we've considered primarily because at this juncture, we do not have oversight or responsibility for constructing said sidewalk.
Okay. I just would like to leave that on the table. I would like to go back to Mr. Maynard. There's been suggestions of other locations for the sidewalk, one being the opposite side of the street, the other being an internal sidewalk within Huntington Woods that would connect through a city park onto a pre-existing sidewalk on Michigan Avenue. Was that ever explored? Or is that beyond your scope?
Other sidewalks within the Huntington Woods community was actually not within our scope of work. We were given a specific direction, and that was the direction that we followed. We did take a slight look at trying to go on the other side of the roadway, and due to crossing concerns and difficulty seeing, it wasn't an option. It made more sense to stay on the same side of the road, knowing that there was a few gaps, that the connection could eventually be made. Sidewalks are typically done that way. You build it, and you wait for the next project to come along to continue the path forward.
I do have a really great concern at this moment about the cost and the city taking on this project, because there is no firm dollar amount established. And over the course of just this conversation, we've talked about, you know, a possible 10% increase for items that were not addressed in that bid. We've talked about another 15%. We have not addressed the fire hydrant that would need to be moved, whether or not Adient would put in a sidewalk, or the city would have to do that, or a crosswalk of how you're going to get that traffic, you know, over across the street, or are you expecting the flow to go all the way to Michigan Avenue? So I want to make sure that we are not leaving that element of the conversation out. I'm very concerned about the number and the cost of this project just growing and growing and growing. I was the one, if you recall, that proposed, when the initial agreement was made, that we do not take on a percentage of the construction cost. I was firm in wanting a dollar amount put into the contract of the city's contribution. Now we're going back to percentages on numbers that just keep escalating, and I think that this is a cost prohibitive project for the city to bankroll at this point.
Any additional questions?
No, I will stop there so there's time for everyone. Thank you.
Yep, we are about, let's see, about 14 minutes before we need to adjourn. I don't know that Councilmember Kamara Sulek has been able to join us, but we'll turn it over at this time to Councilwoman Mitchell for questions or concerns.
Thank you, Your Honor. How's the sound level?
Fine.
Okay, thank you. I guess I first want to start with you, Mr. Morrow. What do you think has been the main cause of delay in getting, because that's never been clear to me. Do you have an idea about that?
Probably better for Mr. Maynard, who's been Mr. Shipman's consultant, to address that. But I think there was some confusion over what was going to be approved and what was ultimately approved by the Road Commission. So there was additional construction work that was essentially mandated in accordance with a permit being issued that caused the price to increase. Perhaps Mr. Maynard can speak, well, can provide some more depth on that particular point.
Yeah, so that is correct. The original plan, though, it received an approval by the Road Commission, ultimately was noted and flagged for some grading and drainage concerns that they had. Mostly was due to the discharge point on the Adient property. It appeared that they felt that that was going to create some unnecessary erosion, and it was recommended that we connect to an existing storm structure further down the roadway to limit that erosion. And ultimately, there were issues with secure and easement as well. Even though natural drainage courses were there, it was felt that it was better to take a more direct approach and discharge directly into the creek where there was an easement for that.
Okay, so I just, I want to make sure I understood you. So what you're saying is that the main cause of delay is that it wasn't clear from the Road Commission for the beginning, when you first started, that drainage would have to be addressed?
That is correct. During our first review process with them, that wasn't indicated that that was one of their concerns that actually arose slightly later on in our review process. The other concern was also brought up is about the trees, which is where we brought the sidewalk forward to retain those heritage trees originally. We were looking at removing those and keeping the sidewalk in a normal point where it would be right up against the right of way at the back of the right of way line. So that was the other concern, was saving those trees and moving that sidewalk forward, which also increased the amount of storms that were necessary to build the project.
I see. Okay, thank you. And speaking of the trees, I very much appreciate that you were wanting to save those legacy trees, because those contribute to the value of a property. And I just saw a sidewalk the other day lifted by tree roots. So what was the original plan for drainage then, before the commission got involved? Were there curbs requested for this project?
No, when the original plan was done, we were actually able to have a ditch line... No, when the original plan was done, we were actually able to have a ditch line still installed between the sidewalk and the edge of the roadway, so culverts would still have worked, and ditching would still have worked through the roadway, um, up until a certain point, we had some storm sewer, but not the, to the extent that we have now.
Sure, and, and what is the standard, um, that that decision is held to, is there a certain square footage of, how is that decision made? I mean, really, we need the Road Commission person here, right? Um, but I don't know if you know the answer to that question.
Well, I do know the answer, and it's basically, as a property owner, um, you have the right to not have water pounding on your property, so by installing a sidewalk, if I'm damming the water on somebody's property, I cannot do that, I have to accept that water as it's been flowing in the past, to the right-of-way, and ultimately to the point of discharge.
And I, I think that's a really important point to highlight, that not all of the increased costs of this project are a bad idea. Um, I share Ms. Dillon's concern about cost containment, but also, if we are going to put a sidewalk across these two township properties, um, I think it's a responsible thing to do, um, so I, I do appreciate that answer, and that, that makes that cost easier for me, um, because it is in consideration of the homeowner. So, um, how close are any of those legacy trees, how close are those now to the sidewalk, now that it's moved closer to the road, please?
Um, I'd have to take a look at the plan, so I can get an idea of that, see if I can find those.
I, you can follow up with me later, too, you can always write an email, I don't mean to catch you off guard.
So, in general, I'll let you know, you know, the, the right-of-way is typically 33 feet, you have room for a roadway, and then you've got room for a shoulder or a ditch line, so some of those trees, those heritage trees that we are saving are actually in the right-of-way. Um, technically, the Road Commission has the rights to remove those, though they choose mostly to try to save as many trees as they can, where they can save them safely. Um, so, we could be within 10, 15 feet at the most, within some trees.
Mm-hmm, okay, 10 to 15 feet, and then I, I, so I, Your Honor, I'm going to have more questions, I will require more meeting time to, to understand the, the true thing. I guess my most important question at this point, I'll switch away from trees, was our urban planner ever consulted to look at this situation and suggest some solutions?
I'm gonna, thank you for that, I'm going to ask for Mayor Potem Girba's, uh, assistance on this, because his tenure, uh, predates, uh, predates mine, and I think he was involved on planning commission during Huntington Woods Phase One. Um, I'd have to review my minutes, um, but I know that the connecting sidewalk was discussed, um, at some length during the site plan for Phase Two of Huntington Woods. Mr. Girba, do you recall if it was discussed with any, uh, in any detail during consideration of Phase One of Huntington Woods in the early 2000s?
Not that I recall, I know there was consistency of wanting to have that sidewalk, but it was on the responsibility of the developer to see to it, to get the easements, and to move forward on it. Um, the city didn't take on the responsibility, because that was a concern of the different governing agencies, and getting the ability to get into the roadway. Um, and at that point, we didn't know what was going to happen, because it was that concern, so at that time, it was going to be the developer that was going to move forward to make any decisions, and I think we didn't really have any plans, it was just try and figure a way to get a sidewalk through there and acquire whatever you, rights you needed to do to do it.
Right, so I, I appreciate that, Mr. Girba, I appreciate you, your long memory. Um, and Your Honor, I guess one of the things I'd like to suggest is that we have an urban planner look at this, because we're having all kinds of such discussions about, it's half a sidewalk, we might remove contaminated soil, we might go across adient property, the crossing is dangerous, um, I think it would be good for a professional to suggest several different scenarios to us, um, not from any point of interest, or we need to cross at this point, but purely from a professional planning view, and I'll leave it there for now.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kamara Sulek, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here, I've been here for the whole conversation.
Oh, um, I apologize, um, we have just a few minutes, but if you have some questions for, uh, for either staff or our guests, uh, you may ask them now.
All right, thank you, yes, I have, I have a few, and I'll try to keep it, uh, I'll try to keep it quick.
I'd appreciate that.
Um, so, I agree that it's, it's, it's our responsibility, uh, to make sure we have a, a really good grasp of what the costs are. Uh, I see a, a number of figures, uh, for costs of the project, uh, exactly how much funds we have from, you know, Mr. Shipman, the difference in the cost switching to asphalt, and I'd like to know what the timeline is, is, for Phase Two and Three for Huntington Woods, um, if that would be, if that would hold things up. So, I'd like a little bit more information on that as well, but I, I feel we've made some progress here tonight, but I think we all, from what I'm gathering, need a bit more information to move forward, but, uh, and I, and I agree, uh, that an urban planner would be good to, uh, take a look at this, that's, that's a, that's a really good idea. And, so I, I know we're out of time, and that we'll be getting back into this discussion at a later point, so I'll leave it at that, and, and look forward to getting, um, additional information.
Very good, thank you, Councilmember Kamara Sulek, I, I took a few notes, and then I'm going to make a, a brief statement before we conclude tonight's work meeting. Uh, Mr. Maynard, first of all, thank you for your time, uh, one of the things, because I heard this from multiple colleagues, that, uh, perhaps you could look into and get back to us on cost, is, um, what the savings would be if we transitioned from, um, concrete to asphalt, and, uh, assuming, well, we, we, I think we're pretty certain that that's doable, um, and would be permitted by the, the Road Commission, but we would want some guarantees on that. Um, so if you could do a, a, a little bit of research for the, on the city's behalf, we would appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Green, uh, the materials that were provided to, uh, city council, specifically the most recent design iteration of the Huntington Woods connecting sidewalk, I think that was a good suggestion to forward that on to Carlisle Wartman, um, and see if we could derive any feedback or suggestions from them on, on how this could be approved, uh, if there are im- improvements to be made. Um, the other thing that I would ask of my colleagues, because I, I believe a number of you do have, um, some outstanding, uh, questions and concerns, um, but in a desire to keep moving expeditiously and try to, to develop consensus in the not-too-distant future, I would ask that if you do have questions pertaining to the connecting sidewalk, that you email those to me, to my office, no later than 5:00 PM this Friday, that gives you the rest of the week, um, and we will then disseminate, uh, those questions to either Mr. Shipman, Mr. Maynard, Mr. McCullough, or any other interested party or involved party, excuse me, who may be able to answer. Um, I will state, you know, again, I think there's a fundamental question at play here, um, and it involves connectivity, and I believe that those residents of our south-central corridor, specifically Huntington Woods Phase One, Phase Two, and ultimately the residents of Phase Three, deserve a, a safe and efficient way to enter and exit the city, um, and specifically to access our downtown. Um, and as has been noted in the past, this has been something that's been promised and talked about for the better part of 15 years, and in my judgment, it's time to deliver. Um, I am sensitive to the concerns of, of, uh, those in the vicinity, specifically in Celine Township, I will note for the record that I have done my utmost, as has, as has staff, to communicate, um, proactively with, uh, with affected parties, um, and those that have not been contacted and would like updates on this issue, they are welcome to call me, 734-272-3654, or they may email me directly at bryandmarl@gmail.com, again, that's bryandmarl@gmail.com, and I would be happy to, to notify them of, of future meetings or discussions on this topic. So again, if you could give me questions by 5:00 PM this Friday, that would be great. Uh, Mr. Maynard, I will follow up with you, Mr. Shipman and Mr. McCullough, because I do believe it's, uh, probably necessary to have a, um, an additional meeting, uh, sometime in the next couple of weeks or, or months. Again, I want to try, give, give folks the information that they need to make an informed decision, the same time I want to move expeditiously, because I, as I said just moments ago, it's been talked about for the better part of 15 years, it's time to deliver, this is a quality-of-life issue, and, uh, our residents, especially those on our south-central corridor, deserve access to the community, specifically to our downtown. So, Mr. Maynard, thank you again for your time this evening.
Brian, no problem, Mark McCullough, I was back, so, uh, yeah, just reach out to me if you have any further questions, sorry I had a, the abrupt, uh, departure, it's quite a crisis for the moment, but.
No, you, you've had quite a day, my friend, we wish you well, and I will follow up with you later this week, thank you, Mark.
You, take care.
Yep, thank you, Joe, we appreciate it.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Yep, you as well. That brings us to 7:00, my friends, so if there's nothing further to be discussed this evening pertaining to Huntington.
I would like, Your Honor.
Yep, we're very short on time.
Yep, I would like to clarify that my request is not to forward this particular plan to Carlisle Wartman, it was to have them look at the whole situation, the entire stretch between Huntington Woods and US 12, and recommend the, the best steps to take.
Very good, that's noted for the record. Um, if there's nothing further this evening, it is 7:01, is there a motion to adjourn the work meeting?
Move.
Moved by CO to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Del Orco, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned.